Okay. Well, welcome to City of Taft Planning Commission's special meeting Wednesday, December 21st, on year 2022, City Hall Council Chamber at 209 East Kern Street. City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at https://www.youtube.com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. It looks like an underscore. Public, oh no, public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at ymayfield@cityoftaft.org. Made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. So, special meeting will start with the pledge of allegiance, and I think I'm going to go ahead and lead that tonight, and then it'll be followed by the invocation led by Stephen McDaniel.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given to our city and to our area. We just pray, Lord, for your continued blessing and covering over the city. We pray for all the decisions that are going to be made on this committee tonight. We just pray that you would guide each and every thought and each and every decision in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And thank you.
Okay. Print's getting a little smaller. So, roll call, please.
Chairman Orrin is absent. Vice Chair Livingston?
Here.
Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
And Commissioner Lykem is absent.
Okay. I am going to skip the citizens' request for public comments because the public comment sheet really has someone who's here for a item that's on the agenda. And seeing no other person, we'll just move on to item number two of the minutes. And the recommendation is to prove as submitted. I will need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Oh, you want a roll call vote on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. Okay. Item three on the agenda, public hearing. This is a time extension for number 202211, and I think you mean a map, right?
This one is a solar project.
Oh, the solar project, pardon me. Yes, it is. I'm working backwards. So, we are going to conduct the public hearing, and I'm asking Mark to go ahead and give us the rundown.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Livingston. The item before you, as you mentioned, is time extension number 2022-11. And this is regarding approved, adopted resolution number 2019-23, approval of conditional use permit, I'm sorry, resolution 201903, approval of conditional use permit number 2019-2023. And back on August 19th, 2020, the planning commission adopted resolution, excuse me, I'm number saluting here, I apologize, 2020-11, approving conditional use permit number 201923 to develop solar photovoltaic energy generation facility of up to eight megawatts, power conversion system, and battery energy storage system on 58.25 acres located on private property within the industrial and general commercial zone districts, east of Airport Road, south of East Ash Street, and west of Gas Company Road. The proposed project is located on vacant property that wraps around the north and east sides of Taft's wastewater treatment plant. The approval for the conditional use permit provided for a one-year period to start work on the project, Taft Municipal Code, Section 6-2-18, regarding extensions of time, permit extensions on approvals are allowed for up to four years after the original approval expiration date. The applicant Apex Energy Solutions LLC has been working on the plans and construction drawings needed for a permanent plan check. However, Apex has been holding back on submitting plans until they have cleared the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's requirements for an incidental take permit to be able to clear the property. The applicant submitted an extension of time application and letter specifying their request on November 8th, 2022. The applicant has been in regular contact with the city regarding the timing of submitting for plan check. It is recommended that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution granting a two-year or 24-month extension of time on the approval of resolution 2020-11 to August 19th, 2023, with all conditions of approval and full force and effect. And as I've mentioned there on the SEQA, it was cleared on, by mitigated negative declaration, and it was filed with the Kern County Clerk on September 22nd, 2020. And as I mentioned in the staff report, they've been working on that environmental approval with the state agencies and just haven't gotten there just yet to submit for the grading plans that allow them to actually touch the dirt and clear the site for their development. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions you may have, the applicant is both, we have one applicant representative in person and one on the Zoom call if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Excuse me. Do either of you have any questions for the applicants?
I got a couple.
Okay. Open the public hearing, I think is probably
Sure.
appropriate as well. So, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing and ask, ask this to be on the record, then if you've got some questions, please feel free to ask.
So, do you guys own the property, or do you lease it, or?
Yeah, please come up to the podium.
Yes, my name is Ervay Parry. I'm with Z Global. So, yes, we do own the property. It's been, it's been on for quite a time now.
Okay. I was just curious, because like, so like, you guys do a contract with, say, like PG&E or SoCal Edison?
Correct. So, currently, there is what they call a purchase agreement, a power purchase agreement with PG&E. So, essentially, we have a contract with them to buy the power that will be generated on the property.
How long is that contract?
The contract, I believe, is 20 years.
20 years?
Yeah.
So, after that, are they obligated to renew the contract, or where can that end?
They're not obligated to renew, but everything indicated that they can renew their contract. And we also have the option to sell the energy to the open market as well.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Neither do I, actually. I was on the commission when this was approved, and we're not really changing anything, we're just giving you an extension, so unless anybody else has any questions or feels they need to say something about the project, I'm ready to close the public hearing and take a vote. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. And we need a motion for, to adopt a resolution, and that's a long resolution motion, so.
Yes, both will be a little lengthy.
So, either one of you, please.
You want me to read this out?
Yes, please.
Yes, just read out the.
I make a motion to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Taft approving time extension number 2022-11 to extend the adoption of resolution number 2019-03, and approval of conditional use permit number 2019-23 to develop an up to eight megawatt alternating current MWAC crystalline solar photo volt type, PV energy generation facility, power conversion system PCS, and battery energy storage system BESS on 58.25 acres in the industrial one and general commercial GC zone districts. Located east of Airport Road, south of East Ash Street, and west of Gas Company Road for an additional two years to August 19th, 2023.
Vice Chair, before we get a second, can I ask respectfully, I apologize, I'm catching a typographical error on the resolution.
Sure.
And if Commissioner Johnson looks about the third line or so, the prior adoption was not 2019-03, it's 2020-11. I believe it's correct in some areas of the staff report and resolution, and then it's wrong in other areas, so I believe just the title was needed correction. So, not to confuse everything, this extension of time project number is 2022-11, which is correct, but then the next line where it refers to the prior approved resolution, it's 2020-11, not 2019-03.
Okay.
But the conditional use permit project number looks like, appears to be correct in all areas.
Okay.
So, do I need to read it all again?
No.
You could just accept the revision.
Well, accept, I'll accept the revision.
Yeah, I don't see any other changes that appear to be necessary anywhere else on the report.
The body of the reso has 2020-11 throughout, so it's all there except in the title itself.
Okay. So, we'll just need a second.
I will second the resolution to adopt.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. It's approved with a 3-0 vote with two absent. And we will now move on to our next item. And I'll call on our director to lead us on to item number four.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. Item number four before you is a public hearing for time extension number 2022-12. So, on December 19th, back in 2012, the planning commission adopted resolution numbers 2012-06, 2012-07, and 2012-08, which approved tentative track map numbers 7227 and 7230, and adopted a mitigative negative declaration environmental determination for both tracks. And the project was located within the single-family residential zone district located west of Hillard Street, north of A Street, and south of Lassen Avenue. The project site for track map 7227 lies entirely north of the west end of the Rails the Trails multi-use path, while tentative map 7230 project site is south of the trail but north of the existing Parkview Village housing development. The approval of the tentative track maps provided for initial two-year, 24-month period to start work on the project, per the state subdivision map back Government Code, Section 66452.6, Section E provides that the expiration date for track maps may be extended for a period not to exceed six years. Typically, time extensions are granted on a year-to-year basis. The applicant Parkside Development LLC has been diligently working on the track map developments, having recorded two phases of track map 7227 and completing the construction of 48 single-family residences. However, the completion of the last residence of phase two occurred in January 2022. Having not yet submitted for phase three development plans, the applicant submitted an extension of time application with their request on November 14th, 2022. The applicant needs to work with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to extend their incidental take permit that covers both track maps, which may cause further delay for phase three. It is recommended that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution granting the one-year extension of time on the approval of resolution numbers 2012-06, -07, and -08 to December 19th, 2023, with all conditions of approval and mitigation measures in full force and effect. And that includes the SEQA determination that's listed on the staff report, which dates back to 2012, and was filed on January 28th, 28th of 2013 for a mitigated negative declaration. Now, this one's a little more unique compared to the prior project, which had an approval but hasn't really done grading permits or building permits, there's no activity, so their date was based on their original approval date. In this case, it's coincidental that their filing is around the same time as when they received their approval nine years ago, or nine, 10? There have been subsequent actions by the council, there's dates there, there's the permit dates and all that, so we're just sitting on the anniversary date, if you will, when they received their planning commission approval dates back in 2012 to get their first one-year extension of time, because this entire 10-year period now, they have been working on, as I mentioned, grading permits, filing maps, all that. As long as they're active, they can just continue in completing the tract. But when it, there is any kind of lull in it for more than six months, it's recommended to legally go through an extension of time process like this to make sure those maps are still approved and valid. And part of that, it's our chance to review it again, but there's no need for changing with what's going on there on the condition side. But as I mentioned, the developer will use this to essentially get their extension of time with the state as well on that incidental take permit. And if you've heard, that's basically the permit from the state where they're concerned about the kit fox and the ground squirrels and the other species that might be on the site type of thing. And they have their own conditions of approval that the developer has to follow as well. So, they're kind of hand in hand, but we're the lead agency, so we approve our approval first, and then that assures the state that they have a valid approval on their maps to move forward on to phase three and beyond. And if it takes any longer, we'll work with them to get one more year, and we'll be back before you sometime next year, but hopefully it doesn't take that long for them to work with the state. So, that concludes my presentation. I could take any questions before you have questions for the developer. Robin Owen is here for any questions you may have.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up again the public hearing. And have either of you have questions for either Mark or our applicant?
I don't.
So, right now, are you guys moving forward with the project? Still waiting on state more, or are we on hold for a, for like a sale? I noticed you're selling there.
Yeah, Vice Chair Livingston and Commissioner Dowden and Commissioner Johnson. Right now, we just need more time to explore our options, and we are working, I'm working with the civil engineer on our nice stack of paperwork we get assigned Fish and Wildlife. It's probably about that high, so they're going to have some light reading over the Christmas break. But, yes, right now, we just need more time to decide what, what we'd like to do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been my experience that in this particular setting, it is never the city that's causing the delay, it's usually the Fish and Wildlife Service who takes their sweet time on trying to.
And, and we do appreciate the city working with us.
So, I have no questions. I think it's pretty routine, in my opinion, unless anybody else has got anything else they need to say or ask questions about.
That's beautiful, what you've done so far. Thank you very much.
Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And again, I need somebody to give us a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll motion.
Do you have the reso in front of you to?
You need to go ahead and read the whole damn thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll motion to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Taft approving time extension number 2022-12 to extend the adoption of resolution of 2012-06 and 2012-07 and 2012-08. That adopted a mitigated negative declaration and approved tentative track map NOS 7227 and 7230 to develop up to 394 partials for single-family residential development located on 127 acres in the single-family residential R1 zone district located on the west side of Halyard, north of A Street, and south of Lassen Avenue for one year to December 19th, 2023.
I, I second that.
Thank you. Okay. Again, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. Again, passes on a 3-0 vote with two absences. Moving on to item number five.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. It's December, so it is a season for organizing ourselves for 2023, getting our regular meeting dates set for the year. So, for 2023, following our approved regulations for the planning commission on the calendar, as you know, typically, our first Wednesday of the month is our meeting date. However, this year, with the New Year's date holiday getting so close to that Wednesday, and also with city council, they voted last night to go dark that week as well, I'm recommending that we do bump it to the third Wednesday in the month of January, which makes it January 18th. The second item with regard to our schedule is we do have three months where we'll need to meet on the second Wednesday, which is that month where it lands on the eighth, because that follows the council meeting. That just, we, we operate better when the council and commission meetings are consecutive in a week, so that happens in February, March, and November of next year, and that is listed on the calendar, or listed as the dates in the approval resolution. Moving on to April, the reason why that's going to the third week is in my American Planning Association, I am now the chair of a division of it, the Small Town and Rural Community Division, and I'm expected to attend the national conference, which happens to be the last weekend of March, first week of April, and I'm coming right back from that, possibly that Tuesday night before or the Wednesday of the meeting, so just so nothing's rushed to get content onto that meeting date. I'm recommending we bump it to the 19th. And then I believe that is all for unique dates. The only one I did mention in the staff report, but July 4th lands on the Tuesday for the city council, obviously, they'll go dark for that, but we're open for operation on Monday, we're open on Wednesday, and unless there's anything that you know of today that would prevent you from attending the July 5th meeting, we'll keep it live. There is nothing the week before that prevents us from preparing agendas and all that as well. It's a big holiday, but ends up being kind of standalone and doesn't really, or sometimes it causes a weekend if we, anybody wants to go on vacation, you know? But we're still holding firm on the July 5th date for 2023 as a meeting date. But other than that, I do not see any other conflicts where we would need to move a date here or there, although there's, that's actually quite a few with the dates I've mentioned. So, if there's any other questions on particular dates, if you happen to know any conflicts as they, as it sits, otherwise, we can play it month to month if anything else comes up, and otherwise, we'll take a motion and a second on the attached resolution to set our dates for 2023, and the clerk will get the finalized copy of the reso to you so you can mark it on your personal calendars.
And just out of curiosity, have you had a chance to speak with either of our two absent members?
I have not, and they have not relayed anything back.
Ron said he was in support of everything on the.
Yes.
Okay.
The chairman.
So, we're okay with Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Then, of course, we just need a motion and a second again.
I can, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Taft approving the 2023 regular meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, and does this require a voice vote, or can we do a?
It's a roll call.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, then.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. Again, passes on a 3-0 vote with two absences. And get back to my. Okay, so we're now at the report phase of our meeting, and our planning director, do you have anything you feel you need to report?
Well, having attended last night's city council meeting, it reminded me to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, all of the above, and hopefully we get through the holidays just fine and hit the ground running in 2023, because our next meeting, I'm hoping to have a project for you to act on, but 2023 is going to be, I mentioned after our specific plan got approved, it's going to be our housing element year. It's a much smaller document, but it still has somewhat of a semi-intensive process and beyond just looking for available properties that can have housing on it and counting it up and telling the state we have it. So, meeting by meeting, kind of like I did when the consultant reported back on the general plan, I'll be reporting back, and probably sometime next summer, we'll get a consultant to help support the document and wrap it up and complete the environmental component and all that. And I'll explain why we're getting a little more intensive than we did eight years ago on the prior process, so just be ready for that and hope everybody has a good new year.
Just out of curiosity, did this spat of new legislation this time around, is that going to affect the housing element much, or is it?
I don't believe so, but that's where the consultant will come in to make sure all those are incorporated, or if it's, sometimes you could just put it into the program that when you approve the housing element, within one year or the eight-year period, you do such and such activities to adopt everything, so we'll make sure to go over all that, just going to focus more on things that have already been well-approved and implemented if it's missing in our program, plus the reviews by the state cover that as well. So, it's, I want to make sure, kind of like what we did with the specific plan.
Right.
Each meeting, you'll get some little tidbit of update as we progress, and just so it's not as, here it is a year from now, approve it, please, so that's my intent.
Don't want to do the fire hose method?
No. Approve it or else.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. But that is all I have for this evening.
Okay. And our city attorney is not present today. Okay, and our city attorney is not present today, so I'm assuming.
Not present, he did not relay any message other than Merry Christmas and Happy New Year as well.
And probably no other comments. Any commissioner comments? I have none.
I have one. I noticed that Habitat for Humanity is having some activity at their, on their next project down Calvin and Third Street, and that is such an opportunity for a family to come in and have a huge life change. I'm a Habitat for Humanity homeowner, and I've been in my home, I think, sixteen years, so I went into it with my kids in my mid-fifties. So, it was an amazing opportunity for me. I was able to have the stability in my family. I went back to school and actually started a, a new career, started with Taft College as a director of adult education. So, that was a huge life change for my family and myself, and I just hope that, and pray that the people of the City of Taft support this work. It's built with volunteer labor, and it's just such an opportunity to help a really great organization and promote life changes for a family in our community. The family has not been chosen, as far as I know, at this time. I don't know if those applications, if that application process is still open, but I would encourage anybody who's interested to call Habitat for Humanity, Golden Empire in Bakersfield, and put in their application for that. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, and yes, I, I spent some time on the board for Habitat in San Diego, and it is truly life-changing for, I don't think there's anybody, it, it doesn't change their, their entire outlook, whether it's an emotional push, financial, it is simply an amazing opportunity, so I, I do support that, and if, if there's opportunity to still apply, people should take a look at that and see if they can make an application if they're interested. I agree. If there's no other comments, I'm going to save everybody some time. I'll volunteer to do the presentation in January unless somebody feels, you know, some pressing matter that they need to go ahead and do it instead. If not, then I'm perfectly happy continuing to be the rep in front of the city council. So, are you? With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.